Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, July 14th work session, the Cabarrus County Board of Education. And now, I knew I was going to be flustered with everything going on. So we are now in session, and we will start our meeting with a moment of silence. And we have lost two family members. Pizarro Guest, a fourth grade teacher at Irvin Elementary, passed away on Saturday, June 21st, and Richard Kiesler, CCS, a retired bus driver for field trips, passed away on Saturday, June 21. And if you will, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Board members, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison and a second by Dr. Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda has been adopted, and we will move on to our recognitions. We will ask Glenda to come to the podium. And is Ms. Allison Hahn with you, coming? Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, Allison is at the board table tonight.
Well, I knew that. I didn't know if she was going to walk down there with you or stay up here, so...
I'm going to allow her to stay right there. But I would like to introduce Allison, and I know that you've met her before, but Allison is our current Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year, and she began her teaching career with Cabarrus County Schools in August of 2009 as a secondary math teacher at Central Cabarrus High School. She is a graduate of Clemson University, and I told her I would not hold that against her, being a Gane-Cock fan, with a degree in secondary math, and she's currently working on her graduate degree in math education with UNC Charlotte. Allison was asked to help with planning of the STEM magnet program at CCHS, and after exhaustive research and visitations and planning for the program and working with it since its inception, she now serves as the sophomore team leader for the STEM program. And during our conversation right before the board member, board meeting, I discovered that she'd taken a group of our students to Denmark, a group of our STEM students to Denmark this past March, and is pretty much a world traveler. Does a great deal of traveling, has been in Europe eight times and South America twice. Highlights included living with an Italian family for a summer during college and traveling to Peru. It goes without saying that we are very proud of Allison and excited to have her be a contributing member and a representative of the Board of Education for our teachers in Cabarrus County Schools. So I'd like to welcome Allison.
Allison, we're very happy to have you here, and would you like to say anything?
I just want to say that I'm really looking forward to this year. I know it's going to be an incredible learning experience for me, so I'm honored to be here.
Well, fantastic. Well, we will appreciate your input, and at any time in a discussion, if you've got something that you would like to contribute, just make sure to let us know and then key up, and we will eagerly anticipate you being part of the discussion from the teacher's perspective. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we'll move on to Section 5, Approval of the Minutes. We've got minutes from the June 2 work session, the June 9 business meeting, and the June 26 budget amendment meeting.
I had a couple of comments on some of those.
Okay.
On the discussion where we were talking about the annexation of the...
Which day first?
It's the first one.
June 2?
June 2.
Okay.
On the discussion where we were talking about the annexation of Hickory Ridge Middle School and the, about the road, there was a comment that at least I made about the speed bumps and the, I guess the, the school thinks that was an important part of having those speed bumps remain a part of that road, but I didn't see any mention to that on the minutes.
Okay, I don't know...
Yeah, I remember you bringing that up, and I think the discussion was that once it becomes a public road, we no longer can require that the speed bumps are on.
That's correct.
It'll be up to the town to make, it'll be up to DOT to make that determination.
That's right, and they won't allow a speed bump.
Okay, cool, just have that reflected in the minutes that we at least brought that, had that discussion.
Well, I don't know if our minutes really typically go to that type of detail. I mean, I don't really have a problem with that being in it, but...
No, that's fine to have that in it, just that also to recognize that...
If that's not a problem, I'd...
That it was the Department of Transportation that would make the final determination.
Okay, so we will, let's see, Eileen, will you, I guess you will amend. What we'll do, we'll vote on the amended minutes of having mention of, a comment of road speed bumps staying on Hickory Ridge Road with the acknowledgement that we don't think North Carolina Department of Transportation will accept the road with them on there, and that's fine. Okay, so that's June, so any other comments on the June 2?
No.
Okay. Any comments on the June 9?
The public hearing. We have, we have the list of speakers, and I know that Dr. Lauter was taking notes of the comments that were made. Would it be possible to attach those comments to the, to the minutes?
Look at notes.
Yeah, we have a list of names of the speakers. It doesn't really say who they, what they spoke about, but we did take those notes.
I made the...
So have we condensed those in something that's, you know, more formalized? I know that you weren't, I was asking you to record and not even complete sentences, but just to get thoughts down on paper. I don't want something...
All I did was summarize and send it to the board that night when we were finished.
Okay.
So I think what's, what was up in the boardroom that night is what they had, everybody could see, and we put it out and emailed it out that night.
So it would be a public record, then?
I don't, Sarah, do you have any thoughts on that?
I mean, it certainly is a public record, as this document that was maintained for you all in the course of your operations regarding whether or not it would be included in the minutes. Our policy provides that the minutes will contain an abstract of the relevant discussion, and so typically they contain a summary. And so I don't know if it'd be appropriate to include a, you know, a point by point, but if you all wanted to include a summary of Mr. Jones spoke and his concern was X, a sort of a short and succinct summary, you could certainly do that if that was the board's pleasure, but we typically have more of a general summary in the minutes.
And I understand that. That's not what I'm trying to put, put them in the minutes. It was an attachment to, to the minutes. That was...
Well, I mean, I guess I don't have any real objection to it, other than, I mean, it's not even a real objection to it. If the board wants to do it, then that's, that's, that's fine. The comments are, they're recorded, they're on our tape. If somebody wants to see them, they're out there. I don't really see the need to attach them to the minutes, but, you know, I guess what's the pleasure of the board? Anybody have a...
It doesn't matter, you know, if it is, I suppose already have a record.
I personally think it's appropriate. So many people came out, had an opinion about the issues, that their public comments should be supplement, or at least a supplement to our minutes, formally associated with our minutes.
Well, is it something that we need to, as, as Dr. Lauter mentioned, it was, you know, kind of a really quick grab and few highlights to send out, and Sarah's, I mean, we don't do blow-by-blow, we never have, and that's not the purpose of the minutes. So what exactly are we going to attach?
My only, I have not seen Dr. Lauter's notes, and my only caveat would be, to the extent they, you know, he was or was not taking them as a way to sort of be a formalized record, would that be something we'd want to include in our official minutes, or would we be comfortable having more of a general summary as we do have and not attach his document, knowing that it would be available should anyone want to take a look at it? I just wouldn't want someone to look at it and think that it was intended to be more, a more thorough synopsis than, than it may or may not be.
Okay, will you explain that in the statement in the minutes, that it's not intended to be the blow-by-blow, that it's a summary of those comments from those folks?
Yeah, then I think we're kind of convoluted with the general purpose of our, our minutes is, again, they're out there, you know.
I mean, from my perspective, I just want to make it as easy it is for the public. If they read this and they just see these names, it doesn't tell them a whole lot. If there's something that's attached to it, or at least a reference to where to go to find what these comments were, I'd feel more comfortable.
Well, I guess I want to see, whatever we're going to attach, I want to know what we're attaching.
And I'm okay with that.
And so, let's just...
Could we approve the minutes and then ask the clerk to make a condensed version of the public hearing that we could then add to the minutes at our next meeting?
I think we can do that. Sarah, can we do that?
Yes.
Okay, well, then we will, we will approve the, were there any other objections to the minutes? Okay. Anybody else?
And Mr. Chairman, I believe it's also appropriate because we are deferring into a future date the decision that so many people came to our meeting to address. Their comments at that time would be appropriate in, in the next few months in the future when we revisit the decision about the redistricting.
Right, okay. So what we'll do is we'll approve the minutes pending a review of the, the added document. So that's what we'll do for June 9. I need to make sure I get this correctly. And so, now the June 20 special meeting with the Board of Commissioners. Any objections or any corrections to that? Hearing none, June 26 budget amendment meeting. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed on the, the June 20, Mr. Schumaker and myself were absent for that meeting, so we'll have to refrain voting on that one.
That's correct, and I was not at the public hearing. So we have done this before where we voted once to approve them all, and you're only voting for the ones that you actually were in attendance.
Mr. Chair.
So we don't need to have four votes.
One comment, if you could look at, at page 2, the middle, where it quotes you...
Which date?
This, the, the meeting with the county commissioners.
The 20th, okay.
Says that you stated that allocating funds for any number less than this second month of ADM would not be acceptable to the Board of Education. Was that the entire thought? I thought we had something that was a dollar amount. We didn't want the dollar amount per student to be lower.
Uh, let's...
Was that our, was it...
Well, the intention at that meeting was to tell them that one of our points was that the full funding of the charter school students was one of the issues that we had.
Okay, that's not what it says here. It's saying something about the number of students, and as we learned, it wasn't exactly the number of students, it was the total dollar amount that we were, that we were concerned about, because it would be less.
I can't find that little spot.
It's the middle of page.
Deputy County Manager, Mayor Walmsley.
Okay. Well, I mean, I...
Just wanted to make sure that's, it's clear.
I mean, it reflects, I think closely enough of what we were trying to say. We're going to continue to have that conversation with them, but I think it's, you know, we went on into a different discussion after that, but that, that's fine with me, the way, the way it reads. So, but I appreciate you looking at that. Okay, refresh my memory, for June 2, we had a, yes, we had a revision. So, okay, board members, I need a motion that we approve the revised June 2, 14 work session minutes, the June 9 business meeting with the, the June 20 special, oh, excuse me, all right, let me back up for a second. The June 9 business meeting that had the public hearing, so that we will, pending the document that we're going to add, the June 20 special meeting and the June 20 6 budget amendment, and you're only voting for the meetings that you were present.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Walter and a second by Dr. Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Monroe, is that, all that clear as mud? Okay, seven to zero. All right, we will move on to reports, and the first report will be board chair comments. And the one, well, actually, two comments I'm going to make. The first is, if anybody is tuning in and wondering what happened to the agenda for the redistricting, this board decided that we would hold off addressing that since the opening of the school has been delayed with the acquisition of property and with the design, the sense of urgency to do it now has abated, and we will revisit that. But that was consensus among our, our board, and we will have to revisit it at some time in the future, but the, the, the thought of doing it this summer, we just decided that we were not going to do that. The second comment I would like to make is, on Friday, we did meet, as everybody at the June 20 meeting recalls, the mediator set a June, excuse me, a July 11 meeting with the Board of Commissioners, the working groups, as he defined them, which included the chair and vice chair of both boards, the county manager, the superintendent, and the two finance directors, and our attorneys. So that, that meeting took place, and we now will work together and move forward, and part of our discussion tonight in closed session will be that meeting. So, so just that the public understands and knows that meeting did place, take place, and we are going to move forward from there. So with that, we will turn it over for Dr. Shepherd's comments, and we welcome them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items tonight. I want to remind our viewing audience that recordings of the 2014 graduation ceremonies are airing on Time Warner Cable 21 on Saturdays and Sundays this summer. And if you missed any of the school graduation ceremonies, or you just want to enjoy the experience once again, you can watch them on Channel 21. They're also available for viewing on demand via our district website, and the playlist is accessible from the quick link section of that website. Also, our staff members have been very busy preparing for the new school year. Teachers and administrators have filled their summer with numerous professional development opportunities, and our facilities teammates have been working to ensure that our schools are ready to welcome students back just next month. And speaking of welcoming students back, let me just, at this point, say our schools will have open houses on August 20 and August 21. Middle school open house on the 20th from 4 until 6 p.m. High school open house on the 20th from 6:30 to 8 p.m., and then our elementary schools on August 21 from 5 to 7 p.m. And the first day of school for our students will be Monday, August 25. And our back-to-school launch of our website will be next week, the week of July 21, that is. So be sure to visit our district website and all of our social media sites for all the information that you need to get ready for the new school year, and it is coming upon us quickly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Yes, it is coming very quickly, and I would like to back up for just one second. We got off to a shaky start from your chairman tonight, and I have failed to mention that we have a resource officer with us tonight providing our security. So Jacob Barrier, thank you very much for being here, the resource officer from Mount, Mount Pleasant Elementary School. We appreciate all your hard work and all you do for the, the students and our staff out at Mount Pleasant Elementary. So thank you very much. Board members, Section 7 of our agenda for guest speakers, we have none signed up to speak tonight, so we'll move on to Section 8, and we will ask Dr. Lauter to come to the podium for policy revisions for approval on second reading.
These are second read policies that the board has reviewed once, and what's listed in blue are the revisions that you ask us to make. These were all, we tried to group these together, these were all personnel policies that Ms. Jones and Mr. Enriquez both looked at and thought were minor. They're basically, in essence, changes to accommodate the new laws that came down with administrator contracts, so, and I haven't received any questions. Be glad to go through any that you have questions about.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lauter. Instead of going one by one or up and down the line, does anybody, we'll just, since it is a second reading and we talked about it, does anybody have any questions or comments on the, the second reading of the policies as presented? Okay, Mr. Schu?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the policies on second reading as presented.
I have a motion.
Your second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, and just for the benefit of anybody wondering, we typically don't hear something and vote on it all in one night. This is a combined business meeting and work session, so this, this will seem like the fast track. So, okay, fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Lauter. And we will move on to 8.2, and welcome Tara Natris to the podium for our North Carolina pre-K classroom expansion.
Yes, so, good evening. As you stated, I am here tonight to talk about expanding our early childhood programs. About a year ago, I came to you and presented our Head Start application, and one of the questions that was presented at that application was how we could provide additional early childhood services for our students. We usually have between 300 and 400 students on a waiting list or children on a waiting list, and so you asked how we might be able to expand opportunities within our county. So tonight, I'm going to propose an option to provide additional early childhood services to our students. So I first want to talk about whenever we decide what it is we're going to do, there are three things that we usually take into consideration. One are the things that we believe, another is what we know, and finally, it's what we want. And if we combine those three things, it usually leads to what we do, right? So when we met to talk about the Head Start grant a year or so ago, we talked about some of the things that we believe about early childhood education, and these four things are really important. One, I think everyone believes that early childhood education is imperative for all kids. Another is that family relationships are integral to success, right? We know that through what we do with Head Start, what we do with our NC pre-K classrooms, the work that we do at the Mary Frances Wall Center, all entails working with our parents. This third bullet is one of the things I really want us to pay attention to tonight with this proposal, and it's that access should be available in all geographic areas. One of the things that we are really working to do is expand our early childhood opportunities across the county. And as you know, we reduce transportation at Long, so that will limit some of the families who are able to provide transportation to that site. So this is a big piece of what I'm bringing to you this evening. The other big piece is the fourth bullet, and it's about community partnerships. So what I'm going to propose to you is not just something that Cabarrus County Schools is undertaking, but something that we are undertaking with the Partnership for Children. Ann Benfield is here with us this evening representing the Partnership for Children, and also with All Saints Episcopal Church, and we have Jackie Whitfield here as a representative of All Saints. So the community partnership piece is a big component of this plan as well. So our early childhood vision is that the Cabarrus County Schools' early childhood program is to work in partnership with families and the community to enhance the active and creative mind of the whole child. So we're going to talk about a way to expand that this evening. I talked about what we believe. Another component is what we know. We know that early childhood programs have a big impact on students. These couple of slides just talk about what the research says about early childhood. So the Perry Preschool Project is one of the most pronounced studies around early childhood education, and it's important to note that academic scores rebound after elementary school at age 14. So preschoolers do have an advantage over some of their peers who maybe were unable to attend, and more of the former preschoolers graduate from high school. Also, students in Head Start, we're not going to talk about a specific Head Start program today, but students who have early childhood education have a less need for special education and a less need for grade level retention. Additionally, we know that adolescents and young adults who have attended these programs have better health, higher earnings, lower rates of delinquency, right? All of these good things that come out of early childhood education. So it's important that we think about all of these things when we talk about expanding our programs, and especially expanding them in a non-traditional way, because what I'm going to ask you to do is something that is not the traditional way that we think about expanding our programs. So this research is really important when we talk about why we would want to do something like this. So here's what we want, right? We've got the beliefs, the knows, and here's what we want. We want to continue to expand our early childhood opportunities for our students and their families, right? We know we have children throughout the county that we are unable to reach with our current programming, so we're trying to expand that opportunity. So where are we now? This is an important piece of the puzzle. We currently have 176 students at Long School. The students at Long are funded in two ways. One is through Head Start, the other is through NC pre-K funds. So we duly enroll some students, which means that we're able to pay for their services through Head Start funds and through NC pre-K funds, okay? At Fur, Irvin, Rocky River, and Wyancoff, we use solely NC pre-K dollars to fund 108 student slots. So that helps us to spread out some of our programs throughout the county, right? We can have some students at Fur and other students at Irvin, and we try to put students in the programs based on where they live. That's all NC pre-K money. We also have about 200 students at Mary Frances Wall. We use our exceptional children money and tuition money for those students. So that's another side of the county that has services. Even with those services, we still have about 300 to 400 students on the waiting list. However, we've exhausted all of these funds. We can't get any more Head Start money. We tried that a year ago when we asked to expand our funds, and there just are not funds available. There are not any NC pre-K dollars available, and so one of the things that we're trying to do is pool some money that we wouldn't otherwise have. It's dual subsidy funds that come from the Partnership for Children, would be providing us with those funds to expand the program. So those monies would not be able to be used at Long or any of our NC pre-K sites or at Mary Frances Wall. So we're trying to build another location where we can use the dual subsidy dollars that are not currently being used in the county. So what can we do? So the proposal is to lease space from All Saints Episcopal Church. You have a copy of the lease agreement. I've worked with Mark and Sarah on that lease agreement, so they've seen that, they've gone over it and reviewed it. But our proposition is to lease the space and then expand by two classrooms. So we're looking at being able to add services for about 36 children in the county with this program. It would be a full-day program, just like the services we provide at our current sites right now, and it would be fully funded through the dual subsidy dollars. So it's an additional funding stream that we don't currently tap into within Cabarrus County Schools. So I wanted you to be able to see the space, because it's really incredible. We've talked about some of these partnerships before. We've looked at other spaces to expand, and after our meeting about a year ago, and we had talked about trying to add space, I was in a meeting that fall with Ann Benfield, and we were talking about some things, and she said, "I have the perfect place for you to do this." And so probably October, November-ish, we went out and we looked at All Saints as a space, and we walked through, and I said, "I have never seen a space that is like this perfectly situated to expand," right? Because usually it's challenging. You find a space, and we have to do renovations, and we have to do, that was not the case. So I wanted you to be able to see what this space looks like. There will be a single entrance into the building for our students. So one of the things that All Saints has really taken on is ensuring that the space is safe for our students and that it is up to code. We've met with several of the licensing folks. Jackie has met with fire inspectors, building inspectors, all of the folks that we would want to have in place. So what you see in this first picture will be a single entrance. They're putting in a pathway there for the students to have their own entryway there. You can see the classroom space. It's beautiful space. There's an art space and a music space where students will also be able to eat lunch. There's also outdoor space that's connected to the classroom, so the students go out that same door, and there is a fenced-in playground that is up to code. You can see the equipment, and they have beautiful outdoor space, a learning pavilion, they have gardens. I mean, the things that we can do for children in that space is really incredible. So when you see that, you can really envision the learning experiences that children in our county would be able to have. So what are the logistics of building a partnership like this? These are the three main groups that would be focusing on this project. So you can see the Partnership for Children is one of the key players in this, and they would be providing the funding through the dual subsidy dollars. That funding would come to us, just like our NC pre-K dollars do for us to manage. So you see, under Cabarrus County Schools, we would be responsible for the fiscal management side. So just like with NC pre-K, we get X number of dollars per child so that we can run a high-quality program. It would be the same kind of structure. We would get X number of dollars per child, so that this becomes a cost-neutral proposition. It won't cost us anything to do this program, but what you have are kind of three groups who are pulling together, right? You don't often have in partnerships like, yes, we can take the strength of this group, the strength of this group, and the strength of this group to make that happen. So we would get the funding through the partnership. All Saints will provide the space, including renovations. They have worked with the Cannon Foundation pretty extensively this spring and have done all of the necessary renovations to make sure that safety codes are up. We have the scanning keys and things to get into the building. We have the scanning keys and things to get into the building, just like we do within our schools. So they're installing those systems. They've, you know, put that pathway in so that students have one entrance. They're looking at things like sprinklers, right? So they're taking care of the renovations of the space with some support that way. They also are very interested in having volunteers to support our students, so coming in and reading, doing those kinds of things with students. They've also helped order materials, provide materials and things. And then on the Cabarrus County School side, we would be responsible for the fiscal management. We will hire the staff, so we would be responsible for hiring the teachers. That helps a great deal with licensing because they go through the same process that all of our teachers go through when we hire them for any of our early childhood programs. We would be responsible for the programming, so we'll do the curriculum, we'll do the instruction side, just like we do for our other classes. So I see this as another site, just like Fur, Wyancoff, Irvin, same kind of deal. And then we would be responsible for student enrollment. So we're already taking applications for our pre-K programs. So we would be reviewing those applications to see which students are eligible for the dual subsidy funds and then be able to enroll students in that way. So you can see that everyone kind of has a piece of ownership, but without us all three doing this together, it can't happen. As a county, we don't have the space on that end of the county for any additional pre-K classrooms. We don't have funds through Head Start or NC pre-K. All Saints has a beautiful space that used to be a pre-K site that they now do not have the students for, but we have the children, and we know that they live in that area. And the Partnership for Children brings the funding. So when you think about what everyone brings to the table, if any of those pieces are pulled out, we won't be able to make this happen. So it's important that we think about this from the lens of all three groups. If we tried to do it, we wouldn't be able to do it on our own. If the partnership tried to do it, they have to find a center, they have to find people who can support the staff and all of the regulations behind that and curriculum. And All Saints has a beautiful space that they need folks to help run. So that's what we're really proposing. And if you think about what each group is doing, they're bringing a lot to the table. This is a quote from the Partnership for Children. "Our community's greatest asset is the potential of its children. Together, we can ensure they are tomorrow's capable, confident leaders." And I thought that brilliantly captured what we were trying to do today. So I will take any questions or comments that you have.
Great. Thank you very much, Tara. We appreciate the presentation. And Board members, we will start with questions, and we will start with Mr. Walter.
Go over again the dual subsidy funds. Tell me, understand that a little bit better.
So Ann is here to answer those questions. It's just another funding source from the state that runs through Smart Start, but I will let her speak to that a little bit.
Can you just make sure her mic's keyed up?
Yep, I will help.
Hi, Ann.
That's a long, that's a really long answer. I have to go back and explain. Subsidy is childcare subsidy that's federally funded through the block grant, the child block grant funds. In the state of North Carolina, the money comes from Washington DC into North Carolina. And then at that point in North Carolina, there's a large subsidy pool that's set aside that runs through the Department of Social Services called subsidy. And then Smart Start, which is the partnership, and NC pre-K, our money is divided into percentages. Thirty percent of the dollars that we get in Cabarrus County for Smart Start, thirty percent of that has to be spent in childcare subsidy. And then the other seventy percent is spent in childcare-related. Last year, we know that the Department of Social Services managed all of the subsidy, which was about $5 million, and then Smart Start's dollars, which was about $300,000. And last year, the Department of Social Services reverted $975,000 back to the state of North Carolina, which was given to other counties in the state of North Carolina. So this year, the Cabarrus Partnership Board of Directors has decided that we would keep the Smart Start subsidy dollars at the partnership, and we would try to figure out another way to provide childcare subsidy in the county and reach some of the children that are currently on your preschool waiting list. So this is just childcare subsidy dollars, CCDBG, if you've heard about the reauthorization of that in Washington. These are federally funded dollars that come down in the state, and the partnership has control over them, and we're just trying to find another way.
Okay, but they're guaranteed annually? It's not like this year you've got them, but next year they're gone?
No, we have annually, annually, we have about $700,000 of childcare subsidy. We put about $300,000, $310,000, $325,000 to fund NC pre-K so that we can provide the school system a reimbursement rate of $6.50 per child instead of $473. In most counties, school systems are receiving $473 per child, but we reimburse at a rate of $6.50 for Cabarrus County. So yes, the money will be there, year after year after year.
That's important from my perspective.
Absolutely.
And it's free for the families that are going to participate?
They have to, they have to qualify for a ten of eligible temporary assistance needy to needy families. There is an eligibility requirement for it that we have to adhere to.
Okay, and we're not, we're not providing transportation, but we're not providing transportation?
No, you don't have to provide transportation.
Is this location close enough to public transportation, or?
Yes, there's a shelter and transportation on the backside of the building, and also they just put a new shelter and a stop on the front side of the building. It's right beside a Cooperative Christian Ministries.
Okay.
Yes, it's very accessible by transportation, and it's a beautiful location.
I've been a supporter of community partnerships, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So one of the things we're trying to do is really target the students at Royal Oaks, Beverly Hills, and Wyancoff, because they have some students in NC pre-K, but they don't have any more space. So this location is also centered between those three schools, so.
Right. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any questions, comments?
But you're telling me it's not pre-K money, is what you're telling me, though?
It's not NC pre-K money. So what Ann was just talking about with the different pots of funding, that's a different set of funding that comes down to the Partnership for Children. So it's a different set of funds than the NC pre-K funds.
So it's not that same pot. In other words, we couldn't, we couldn't use it down, when you're talking about spreading it out, in other words, we couldn't use it, when you're saying space-wise, then you're saying we couldn't go down at Bethel, say? Because Bethel is an area that we do have space. We do have space down at Bethel. And I'm sure there's children down there that could be in that poverty level. And I'm sure we've got 38 children down there that could utilize that.
So we have looked and are continuing to look at Bethel as a potential pre-K site using NC pre-K dollars in the future. So even if we did that, that would still be a separate pot of money, but there are only X number of slots in the county. So that money doesn't just come into Cabarrus County Schools, it goes into other childcare centers and things. So this was an opportunity to use funds that we know are readily available, whereas the NC pre-K funds are not currently readily available. So we are going to keep looking. Bethel was one of the places that we've looked at. We just aren't there yet with the funds.
Okay, but these are completely different because, of course, I was the one that asked the question because I knew that Long, for instance, had the 38 slots. I knew they had gotten pre-K dollars, NC pre-K dollars before, and they were saying, well, gee, they were thinking these were the same dollars. They knew they had the space, and they were saying, well, what's going on here? And that's where the confusion. So you're saying these are not the same dollars, that these are completely separate dollars. And this is not going to dry up. This is going to continue. Is there possibility for expansion, or is 38 all that can be taken at this location?
So we're starting small. There is room for expansion at All Saints, but we felt like with the first year and, you know, working through some of the kinks with the partnership, that we wanted to start smaller, but there is room to expand. They have, I don't know how many classrooms, I want to say eight, maybe along that corridor, or right around eight classrooms. So we're actually starting with two down in the corner space that are really ready to go for these classrooms, but there would be an opportunity to expand.
But there's basically not going to be any cost to the school system itself. It's going to be a pass-through, basically, is what you're telling me.
That is correct.
So there's not going to be any initial cost to, to the system at all, then? And there will be still the same type of security system in place for any volunteer. They will have to go through the same checks for any kind of volunteer that our people would have to go through, correct?
Yes, so staff, volunteers, anyone will run through HR or the background checks the same way we do for any other staff. And what's really nice about this space is that you have the main entryway, and then the hallway where all of the students will be is off to the side. There will be a key entry for that entrance to get to from the main church. And there's also key entry space for all of the exterior spaces. So you would have to have one of the swipe cards to get into the building as well. So on the side of doing all of the approvals and background checks and things, that would be the same as all of our other policy. And then the physical space is also been renovated to make sure that it's safe for all of the students as well.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, that's all the questions I had.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker, do you have any questions or comments?
First off, Ms. Benfield, Ms. Whitfield, and Tara, I appreciate all the work you guys have put into this. It's so nice to be able to see a cooperative effort. And I know, I guess, Ms. Benfield, you were writing the grants for this, or are there grants that actually have to be written, Tara?
No, these are actually subsidy dollars that the partnership has that we're going to provide for these classrooms.
So you don't have to actually write grants for them, or you just get these dollars?
The Smart Start grant comes into the county from Raleigh.
Okay.
But we don't have to write for the grant, it just comes automatically every year. We wrote for that grant 16 years ago, and it's just reoccurring every year.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
So we, it comes down that way, and we have to spend 30% of our dollars in some kind of childcare services. Half of it goes to NC pre-K, and half of it is for this dual subsidy program.
And so with...
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Go ahead.
As far as grants go, All Saints has written the Cannon Grant, and that was to help us bring the building up to all the state codes and to put in sprinkler system and do anything that the state required so the children are in a top-notch, safe and secure facility.
Now, did you have to have some, I guess, a state audit, a pre-audit of the facility before you got to open the doors?
So we're working on the licensing agreement now. We had a meeting probably about three weeks ago with the representative from the state for licensing. She went through all of the initial paperwork, all of the initial regulations, and they need some things from us. They need a copy of the lease, they need some of that documentation. They will come back in mid-August, if this is approved, to review staff files, student files, the same way we do for any of our other programs. So the Partnership for Children monitors our NC pre-K programs. Head Start, we had our monitoring visit about a year and a half ago. So same system where someone will come in to monitor that work. In terms of grants, I think of this more like our Title I grant, right? So it's recurring, we get every year, we have to figure out how the funds and things are allocated, which is what Ann was talking about. But when I think about the kinds of grants we deal with, I would equate it to be similar to our Title I grant.
So basically, if we approve this, then you anticipate the first day of classes to be the first day of school? Is that what you're thinking?
That's what we're hoping. That's what we're hoping.
And what is the length of lease that you're, that you're suggesting? Obviously, oh, there are a lot of blanks in this lease.
There are some blanks. So I wanted us to have this conversation first. We've talked about various lengths of time, looking at initially being a five-year lease, but a five-year lease with an annual renewal. So we would go through it every year, come back to the board. They, as All Saints, would look through it as the landlord and ensure that everything is in place. So while five years seems like a long time to jump in initially, there is a caveat in there to do a one-year renewal every year throughout those, throughout that time period. So that's what we've talked about, but that was something that we're open to feedback on. But that's why they're blanked, so.
Okay. Well, I figured there was a reason.
[laughing]
Well, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. And just keep in mind that the early termination is 60 days from either party for any reason at all.
I would think as long as the money holds out, we say the money's there.
Yeah, so, okay. Mr. Schu, do you have any questions or comments?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And a lot of my questions have already been answered, you know, by reading the lease and what you've presented tonight, and Board Member questions. And I think that the idea of having the five-year lease with one-year increments is a good thing because, as we all know, and particularly Carolyn and myself, because we've both been Head Start liaisons, and the building over there is a very old building. And at some point, I'm hoping that we'll be able to replace that building. And so if you're tied up in an enormously long lease, then sometimes it's difficult to get out of those leases without paying a lot of money. So it would be wise to do the five-year with one-year increments. And so I'm real happy with that. And I want to also say that I think that Jackie, you, and Ann are really true advocates for children, because this program that you guys are putting together, and Tara as well, you know, you're like spearheading this, putting all three entities, four entities together, Cabarrus County Schools, your department, and Jackie, and Ann. So you're working all together there to be strong advocates for children. And whenever this program is fully realized, if we get to do that, and the money will hold up, that we could literally double the size of Long, you know, because you've got 176, and you'd be close to 150 if you used all of the other eight classrooms with the same capacity that you're going to use these two. So I can see that it's a very much of a win-win situation for the children and for the school system, and we don't want to see Ms. Benfield send money back to the state when we've got children here that need it and can use it, and we can provide the services. You know, you see on here, we've got, what was it, 300, 400 on the waiting list? And so we can only just put a drop in a bucket to those on the waiting list. And Board Members, remember, as our county grows, this population grows as well. And a lot of times, this population, by the evidence of Long staying at 176 year after year after year, has not grown. So this will give us the opportunity. I mean, it hasn't grown, it's grown, but it hasn't actually grown, though, because the funds have, we get so much, and we can only serve so many. But the number on the waiting list just keeps going up and up and up. So this will provide more services for more children. And, you know, I'm just, it's just a wonderful arrangement, and I thank you all for all that you've done to advocate for these children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Harrison?
I too would like to commend you all for this public-private partnership. I don't want to quite call it a faith-based type of arrangement. It is not, I know that. Yet you're still doing God's work one way or another. So thank you for your willingness to participate with the school system to make this happen for the truly needy of the county. My questions on, a few points have been addressed already. The word I wanted to use was sustainability, but you have been, in effect, saying that the funding will be there for the foreseeable future from the federal and through the state. So that's, that's not a question, which is obviously great news. You've also mentioned that we are not kind of encumbering ourselves for any kind of transportation for the foreseeable future, or at all. We're not doing transportation.
We are not currently doing transportation.
Currently?
We're going to see, well, I may come back to you in a year or two and say, now we have these other students who need, but for at least this initial...
Or these other funds from some other source, correct.
Right. Or we are able to get enough per child, and we would be able to support transportation.
Through these existing dollars.
Right. So I will not come to you if the money is not there to support.
But you can make it work through those other means. My questions may deal with the lease itself. Um, my, my questions may deal with the, um, uh, lease itself, um, special needs children. I don't have a real question, I'm just asking, how are special needs children, uh, to be addressed and accommodated in this arrangement, uh, per the, uh, structural, um, facilities at All Saints?
So, everything is compliant, is that correct? Yeah, and they've done, and all of the inspections and things for that. So, we do anticipate that we will have some students with special needs at the site and will work with Trina at Mary Frances Wall, she works with all of our students in the county, to make sure. But, in terms of facility, the facility will accommodate the students.
So, Mary Francis Wall will be equally as able to accommodate special needs children as any of our-
All Saints.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, All Saints.
Yes.
Beg your pardon, beg your pardon. Will be equal, equally able to accommodate, uh, special needs situations?
Um, they, they entire hall where the children will be is handicapped accessible. Um, the sidewalk that we're put in, process of having put in, um, is the correct width, it follows all state regulations and, and federal regulations for any person that's handicapped. And, um, we're very blessed with a parishioner with a large wheelchair.
Indeed you are.
And, and she, um, checks everything out for us after, and, um, with-
And lets you know, I bet.
Right. And she does a test drive with great vigor and happiness and, now, we've made sure that it'll be a, a safe place for children and that everybody's, can have accessibility.
Okay. Um, thank you. And, um, again, ju, I just generally want to ask the, the question, which I'm sure is covered in the lease, risk. Whose is it?
So, there is a component in here about liability insurance, right? Um, for, but, so, we are responsible and the church is responsible. So, I'm not the attorney, um, but knowing that Mark and Sarah and Phil as well, right, someone else with the firm, um, have reviewed those pieces, it would be a shared, right? Because we're hiring the staff and we're doing, um, the employment pieces. So, I would imagine there would be some liability for us in that regard, but everything's covered here. So, I'll let Sarah answer any of the legal side questions if you have them, but it is addressed in the lease.
And I don't have a particular question so much as just-
Yeah, it's in there.
How is the risk divvied up?
Um, it is set forth in, in Section Nine and, and basically, as Tara described, um, the church is providing the space and so they have all the liability associated with the physical space. Um, and we're providing the people and so we'll be liable for what our people do and they'll be liable for, um, if you look in paragraph eight, um, any, any damages that arise from injury, um, caused by the, the property or something like that. If they leave a gaping hole in the floor and don't put a warning code in front of it or something such as that.
Finally, uh, materials. What does that mean? What's the content of the materials? The church, All Saints, is responsible for the materials, but I take it those are, uh, CCS and state curriculum materials?
Right, so it will be a combination of things. Um, we've already, with some of the funding from the partnership, have purchased similar materials to what we would get to open any kindergarten classroom. So, at Irvin and Fur, Rocky River and Wyancoff, I was forgetting one, we purchased materials for those pre-K classrooms, we purchased the same materials for All Saints. They already had, because they had run a preschool program before, some of the tables, chairs, that kind of, um, equipment or things for them. But, in terms of curriculum, that will be CCS curriculum, they'll follow the same curriculum guides and things and use the same materials that we use at all of our other early childhood sites. So, and we'll receive the funds for that through the subsidy dollars and pay for them the same way we do for our other pass-through funding sources.
Will the, will there be any other supplemental materials provided from the church from a religious, uh, point of view?
No.
No, in fact, we-
And I'm, I'm trying to ask that question as gingerly as possible, but, but, but the relationship obviously begs that question.
We have inventoried the entire hall and, um, anything that might be construed as religious, we've pulled. And, so there are, um, puzzles with animals and letters and numbers and, um, books that align with the state curriculum that belong to All Saints and they will stay there for the teachers to use.
Reserve, um, my thoughts for one last question after Mr. Phillips, please.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips, you have any questions or comments?
Um, I have a couple. First is a comment. Um, yeah, I went to this, um, seminar up at NC State a couple of months ago and I got board, uh, training credit for that. And, uh, the keynote speaker for that was Dan, David KIRB, K-I-R-P. And he's written a book called Improbable Scholars and it's about the experience of the school district in Union City, New Jersey. New, Union City, New Jersey is the embroidery capital of the world. It's the first city that you encounter coming out of Manhattan in the Lincoln Tunnel. It also has about seventy percent of its students that, uh, come to school, uh, from a home that does not speak English. And yet, it has about eighty-nine and a half percent, uh, high school graduation rate, which I think is better than ours. Seventy-five percent of their high school students go on to college. And, in his book, I gotta pull it up here, I'm just going to quote this, um, "Ask school officials to explain Union City's success and they start with pre-kindergarten, which enrolls almost every third, uh, three and four-year-old child. There's abundant research showing the lifetime benefits of early education here, seeing is believing." Not only do they have these, um, pre-K, um, programs in schools, they also have them in churches and even in people's homes that have taken rooms and converted them into classrooms. They put the pre-K where the kids are. And so, I, I applaud you for starting to do that here. Um, I would also reiterate Carolyn's point that it would be nice to try to get something like this, um, in, uh, Bethel or, or somewhere out there on, on that side of the county because as I look at the list of where we do have things, they seem to be centered right in the center of the county. And since we're not offering transportation, that's, that would be quite a trip from, from Midland to get there or even from Mount Pleasant. So, so I would encourage that. Um, that, my, um, let's see, uh, I had a quest, two questions. One question was, if I'm reading the lease right, we're only going to have to pay a percentage of the utilities, that's it?
That is correct.
So, that's, is not rent in the way that you, no way like a rent. So, that-
Right, so that space piece that was in here that All Saints is providing is big. We aren't paying a specific rental amount like you would, you know, you rent an apartment and you pay five hundred dollars a month plus utilities. We will pay them for the portion of the utilities that we use. So, we're going to have to figure that out. We figured out some ways to figure out the percentage of that, but that is all we will pay for, yes.
Well, that sounds like a pretty good deal. Um, and then my only, my last question was, what is the Partnership for Children? Is this a government entity, uh, 501(c)(3) or is it-
I will let Ann have the floor because she probably often doesn't get the opportunity to talk about her organization.
Um, I'm sorry. Back in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, when Governor Hunt was the governor of North Carolina, he had of the, um, um, idea of a public-private partnership in, um, providing Smart Start programs throughout the state of North Carolina and all one hundred counties to provide, um, services for children zero to five so that they would be healthy and ready to learn by the time they got to kindergarten. The idea of Smart Start was to fund twenty-five percent of the need of a county, um, with state dollars. And then the partnership, the local partnership in each community was supposed to raise the remaining dollars to provide, um, programs for children zero to five. So, we're, that's what Smart Start is. And, we originally started as the partnership, the Cabarras Smart Start, but then in two thousand and two, when Governor Easley started NC, or More at Four, that was called then, um, we became the administrator of county dollars for More at Four, NC pre-kindergarten. So, then at that point, we changed our name to the Cabarras Partnership for Children because we were administering two, um, state-funded programs, Smart Start and NC pre-kindergarten or More at Four. So, there are seventy-six now partnerships throughout the state of North Carolina, uh, providing programs for zero to five in the county to help them get healthy and ready to learn by the time they come to kindergarten.
And so, where, where does your partnership receive as many? Is it only the, the state grants that you receive or do you get money from other sources?
Uh, we, um, we get, um, we do have some private dollars that come into the partnership. Uh, where are, we are in the process of, um, reorganizing our boardia's to become a little bit more, um, conscious of raising more, um, private dollars to provide programs. Um, and we do get grants from, um, the Cannon Foundation, Speedway Children's Charities, the Sisters of Mercy, and we do, do a lot of grant writing for the partnership to provide other dollars in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. We appreciate your comments and, and quotes. And Mr. Harrison had reserved, uh, the, he wanted to ask another question.
Uh, yes, and I'll, I'll keep it just to one question for a change, but thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, the name Mary Frances Wall, you know, has a great legacy in the community and, um, also begs the question, what shall we name this program? Do we have any, um, process in place to proceed to, um, get a good name associated with this program so that it, uh, has an equally, um, revered, for lack of a better word, uh, uh, reputation and name that we can, um, go forward with? Um, and do we have a, a process or a plan in place to, um, I guess, find a good, uh, community name that, that adds a lot of benefit to this, uh, ongoing program?
So, I'm smiling because when the licensing person came out a month ago, she said, "So, what will you name your site?" And we all kind of looked at each other and said, "You know, we haven't come up with that name yet." And we threw some ideas around, so, um, I'm open to suggestions of how we'd like to name it, but we are, we have a couple of names in mind and are trying to think through. We don't have a formal process, but, um, we will come up with something. We, um, are toying with some things that I think have that legacy that you're talking about. So, we, we're stumped at that when they came out and said, "Oh, we haven't gotten that far." We were more worried about the other pieces, but-
Well, make it a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Okay.
And, and, and come to that conclusion, uh, for us or, uh, do us proud on that point, please.
We will do that.
If it's hot, we'll all wear our seersucker suits.
[laughing].
You know, Dr. Phillips, you have another comment?
I have a, a suggestion, since this is All-Star break period, uh, it could be the center to be named later.
I like that. Okay, board members, all of my, every question I had got answered. Uh, oh, Dr., Mr. Schumaker has another question, go right ahead.
This is regarding the children that participate in the program. Do you, um, or will they be entered into a power school? Will they be tracked as far as data about them or, and I hate to use that, it sounds so cold. I mean, I'm not sure what the right word is.
They will be entered into power school so that we have all of their demographic information, we can contact parents, we can, so we'll use the same system that we do for all of our other pre-K sites, but we will enter them into power school.
And will there be any types of, um, so that the school that they end up going to, elementary-wise, the, the receiving school, like, uh, their performance, will there be some metrics or things that just show how they, how they, what they've achieved during their time in the school?
So, we're using the class assessments for our pre-K students now, so we'll expand those to the students at All Saints and we'll be able to share that information with their feeder schools as they go into kindergarten. So, we'll use the same.
And my final question is, what type of attrition do you have in your pre-K programs?
We don't have a high attrition rate. Typically, we only lose students if they move out of the county. Um, so, we usually, once kids are in, they stay in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Okay, with no other comments or questions, I need a motion and a second that the North Carolina pre-K classroom expansion through a rental agreement with All Saints Episcopal Church be approved as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
Mr. Walter has made the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Carpenter has seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As a row, that passes seven to zero. Thank you, board members. And Tara, thank you very much and for, for your, your whole team and that presentation. We certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to eight point three and we will ask Dr. Kelly Probst to the podium.
Good evening. Frank's not able to be with us tonight, he's at a conference in Boston at the National Nutrition Conference. I told him that I would bring these two bids to you. They are, um, in our local policy, these are very low amounts, you don't, are not required to see those, but the state is requiring, um, through child nutrition that you approve these bids. The two bids brought to you tonight, the first one is the chemical bid and we are recommending ALCO, Authorized Lake Cleaning Organization, at six thousand, um, dollars per month, um, to be the recommended bid. They were the low bidder. And then the second bid that we need approved this time is on dairy and I had the listed products there. And we are recommending that Campbell Distribution at twenty-four, twenty-one be recommended. And I am proud to say they are located on McGill Avenue in Concord, North Carolina. And I like recommending a local company. Yes. So, at this time, I'll take any questions.
Great, thank you, Kelly. Uh, we will start with Dr. Phillips. Do you have any questions or comments on either one of these two bids? And we will, I guess we're going to vote on them, uh, all in one fell swoop.
Now, I mean, uh, comment was, you know, even as a low bid, it, uh, six thousand a month is, strikes me as a lot to spend for, for, uh, dishwashing liquid, but, okay. I guess, where do you have as many dishes as we do? Maybe that's what you do.
And it's, it's other cleaning products also. There's a, and they come in and they train monthly and they come in weekly and, and stock and they also, um, make sure that we are using those chemicals correctly.
Okay.
With close to four hundred employees touching those chemicals, that's a big piece of it.
Hmm, okay. And then I, I, I did have some, some questions on the details behind the, um, the milk bid, uh, but, um, I, I understand it Frank's way, but he, he did, um, I, I was just wondering what the various quantities were of each item that I wanted to make sure that they were being weighted appropriately on price so that, for instance, if we sell a lot of, um, fat-free chocolate milk and not very much, uh, buttermilk, I didn't want us to be, uh, you know, saying, "Oh, well, these got low buttermilk prices, so we'll go with them." That, that, he did say that indeed it, it is reflective of the quantities that we buy.
And I assured Dr. Phillips that there is no way Frank Fiorella would make sure that, we, we'd make sure he, we had the best price, wouldn't he, Kelly? He's very good with the money.
Great, thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison?
Frank Fiorella is probably tighter with a penny than Carolyn Carpenter is.
He is.
It is, 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 is my, is my suspicion that-
He is an excellent child nutrition director.
Indeed he is. He's a very good steward of our funds and our resources. Um, have we done business with, um, any of these bidders in the past?
I can't answer that question, but I will get the answer to you.
Uh, uh, only, only to ask if we have any relationship with, uh, any of the bidders for the chemicals or the dairy products.
I believe that both of those have, we have had business with them in the past, but I cannot give you the years and I don't want to make a guess on that, but I will get you that answer.
Um, and I don't remember these, this discussion of bids for these two items a year ago. Is this an annual thing we do or what's that, what's the turn, length of the contracts?
You are, you are correct. They were not-
Oh, I do have a good memory. Thank you so much.
They were not brought to you a year ago and in looking at, um, let's say, crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and making sure that we did things correctly, um, it was brought to my attention, we needed to bring these to you. We have three other bids that are out there that were, right now, in year three, like our bread bid, we're in year three, um, our produce bid, and then our, our general food, uh, through Cisco, we're also in year three. So, we'll be bringing you more bids next year.
Should, should this board, and this is an open question, I have no answer for this, by policy or, uh, historical, you know, arrangement, should this board take, um, recommendations, uh, yearly? Are these three, four, five-year contracts or-
These bids are-
Uh, again, should we get to this mid-summer point every year and have several of these discussions and presentations on a yearly, annual basis?
I, I don't want to say annually, it depends on the contract term of the bid. I don't want to say annually. It depends on the contract term of the bid. For example, when we did the bread bid, it was a three-year bid, so I wouldn't bring it to you every three years. These two bids happen to be yearly. So, next summer, you should have me back here doing, or Frank, doing these two. Plus, we'll be coming back with the produce and the bakery and the general food product bids.
Are we aligning those existing contracts and agreements to, in many cases, be on annual cycles?
It depends.
Or does it depend on the thing we're buying from vendors?
It depends on pricing and what we can get. For example, on the produce bid, we come through the state and they did a three-year bid. And generally, when you work with the state and we have a group of counties that go in together, then I would probably stay with that recommendation of a three-year.
Okay. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thanks for your hard work and for, you know, working so hard to get the right supplies and the right nutrition to our children.
Mr. Schu, you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kelly, on the pricing, that lowest bidder, do we know how these compared to your bids in prior years?
I don't. I only have the prices for this year, but I will get back to you if you would like to see what the prices were for milk last year.
Interested in finding out how much of an increase or possibly a decrease in pricing?
I can tell you that the, we, the increase was actually lower than what the record, what the thought increase would be from the consumer index growth. So, we were pleased with that, but I cannot tell you what the exact quote was last year, but I'll get that for you.
Okay. And you had mentioned that, in some cases, that other counties would go together, that type of thing?
Correct.
Are we not part of anything like that?
We are. We are with our produce bid.
Only, but we're not with this, though.
But not with these two, no.
What would prohibit us from doing that, to try to get a lower rate?
I would say probably nothing. And if that's definitely something that we should look into.
Well, I think that we should, you know, because there is power, you know, in buying in unity like that. And I think that if we can, you know, join in with some other counties, that it would probably save us a little bit. If it doesn't save but a couple hundred dollars a month, that's a couple hundred dollars a month that's in our pocket versus some vendor, you know. So, I would say that we would need to try to investigate that a little bit.
Yes, sir.
But other than that, I'm good with it, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Yeah, I think you do it when it's advantageous to you, and there's probably some that are and some that aren't.
The produce is...
But I mean, as far as direction, at least a general sense from the board, you know, take a look at it and make those decisions of when it is advantageous. Mr. Schumaker?
So, where's the cheese? I don't see any cheese on this. And I was just wondering, you know, how do you do the pizza and the...
The cheese comes in on the Cisco bid. All of the cheese in the pizza products and things like that come in through Cisco. So, next summer, you'll see the cheese bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm frugal.
Please let the record show that Ms. Carpenter is frugal.
Frugal, frugal. Yes, I'm frugal. Do you know where ALCO is located?
I do. They're in Troutman, North Carolina. In fact, I brought with me the five vendors that we have. I thought you might be interested. Cisco is actually in Concord, so I'm really pleased that we use Cisco for the bulk of our products. Flowers is in Jamestown, North Carolina. The produce, the R&amp;H produce that we do is a bunch of counties together is in Raleigh, but they deliver down to this side of the state. ALCO's in Troutman.
Well, that's not too far. So, we're getting closer. And I agree with my fellow board members. I think it'd be good if we could maybe, especially the cleaning supplies, maybe. I don't know if we work with Canapla System. That would be, because I know when we started with Magnit, that was something that we worked with, you know, working, working with them on that. I think that'd be good, maybe, with cleaning supplies, because we, that's something that we could transport easily and maybe look with them. And maybe even some other school systems that are close by. That's something that could be transported, picked up easily. So, let's maybe look at that between now and next year, because that could save us a lot of money. But I'm all for sharing and coordinating together.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Walter, you have any comments?
There's some good comments from our fellow board members. Maybe a presentation at our retreat, when it comes up next year, on exactly what exactly we've bid for and some ideas out there that we've talked about.
Okay.
I don't know if Dr. Kirk keeps that record on those items, but that's probably a good item for the board retreat. My only question was on the secondary bids. 2421 for what? What do we get for that? Is that per case, per what?
No, that's for the exact measurements that you have in the list above, like the eight ounces of the fat-free skim.
So, all that's comparable, all those are comparable sizes?
Comparable prices, right. And it was all broken down with individual pricing.
Okay.
We give them the product and the amount, and every, all bidders bid on the same product and amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea for a retreat topic. So, that'd be fantastic. Okay, board members, I don't have anything to add. So, I need a motion and a second that we approve the, awarding the bid to Campbell Distribution for the dairy and for the ALCO for the chemicals.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison.
Second.
A second by Mr. Schumaker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. And we thank you, Dr. Probst, for your input there. And we will move on to 8.4. Approval for training hours to be submitted to NCSBA for board member Rob Walter. Does anybody want to ask Rob a question about her? I'm ready to just ask for the motion unless, Ms. Carpenter, do you have a question?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Fantastic.
I will make a motion that we approve the hours for Mr. Walters. Is it just...
As presented.
As presented.
Okay. Fantastic. We have a motion by Ms. Carpenter.
It'll be my honor to second the motion.
A second by Mr. Harrison.
And that was for last year, so, to complete the requirement.
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seven to zero. Fantastic. Thank you, Rob, for going to that. And with that, board members, I would like a motion and a second that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a3, General Statute 143-318.11a5, General Statute 143-318.11a6, and General Statute 115c 319 through 321.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison.
Second.
And a second by Dr. Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this board is now in closed session.